Okay, I would now entertain a motion to appoint Colin Aldman Fire Chief, Dennis Powell Assistant Fire Chief, and any additional full-time or multiple part-time firefighter, EMT, paramedics as needed, and all current volunteers on the roster. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and there is a second. Any further discussion regarding this motion? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes. I now entertain a motion to appoint Daniel Gokenhour, road department employee, and any other full-time or part-time employees as necessary. Is my motion?
Yes, I move that we appoint Dan Gokenhour and any part-time or full-time employees as necessary.
Thank you.
Your last name's hard to say. Chop that one up.
He's up there, Margaret.
Defend yourself. Go ahead.
Are you ready to vote?
May we vote please?
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Thank you.
I now entertain a motion to appoint Richard Sobezon Inspector for year 2022.
I shall move.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, and are there, is there any other discussion regarding that decision? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Okay, now, this next part, I-
I'm getting there.
Yeah, okay, good, fix it, fix it.
I would now entertain a motion to appoint Joe Fulton to the zoning commission effective of 1/1/22 and ending 12/31/25.
Joe Fulton.
Fulton.
Is it a three-year or a four-year?
Four.
Or five?
Five years.
Well, it starts 22.
It ends in one year on December, and it starts in January, so it gets five years.
Okay, but I'll just-
If you said it was January, what the gen-
What you said, you changed the second year.
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
So, so it isn't- You said 25, instead of 26.
But isn't Greg Schroeder to go for-
Correct.
Am I right?
What?
I would have to consult the list. The list on the website, it shows it 25.
Yeah, that's five years. Two, all 22, all 23, 24, 25. That's only four years.
No, that's only, yeah, it's 26.
Yeah, I mean, it's six.
The website's wrong.
Some-
That's the first time.
So what are the dates? It says 1/21, and you're going to 1/26?
Yes.
I mean-
If he's starting-
Yeah, I got it.
Today, he will be done in, um-
Just before-
Twenty-six, December.
Yeah, the 26th, yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll straighten it out. I, I shall move. Is there a second?
Sure, is that supposed to say 1/1/22?
Yes, or yes. We, that's supposed to say 1/1/22.
Okay.
Twelve forty-
May we vote please?
Um, Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
And I couldn't remember who replaced Linda Parsons. I know she's-
Oh, Greg Schrader.
Greg Schroeder, yeah.
Oh.
Wait, wait, not Greg Schroeder.
Schrader, Schroeder.
Schrader.
Okay, all right, well, just making sure. Schroeder?
S-H-R-O-E-D-E-R?
No, no.
No, that's Schroder.
No, it's A, it's just an A in there.
Okay. S-H-R-A-D-E-R.
I believe so. I'd have to look it up to be absolutely sure. There couldn't, there may not be a C in there, maybe just S-H.
Okay. We'll fix it.
Next, I entertain a motion to appoint David Newhart to appoint-
Sorry, we didn't, we didn't move in second, Greg, yet.
Well-
If you did, I'd already think that.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Hollister and was seconded by Ms. Moyer.
That was for Joe Fulton.
That's a job.
For Fulton. Greg shouldn't need to have anything done to him.
Greg's been crossed out, folks.
Oh, so we just scratched out the whole thing?
Yep, Greg's-
Okay, there we go.
Gone away.
All right, bye-bye.
Right, so may we vote on Mr. Fulton?
I move that Joe Fulton would be appointed to the zoning commission for the correct dates, 20 seconds.
Their term's starting this year.
Yes, until-
I'll second.
Okay. Sounds official. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes. Now I entertain a motion to appoint David Newhart to the board of zoning appeals effective, um-
Wait, he's not already on?
Yes, but he is.
But he's going again.
But he's getting-
It's in second term.
He's going.
We'll call it, I mean, you could call it reappoint, but still, still basically the same thing. 1/1/21 and ending 26. 1/1/22, I'm sorry, ending 26.
I shall move.
I will second.
Any further discussion regarding that appointment? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Ms. Moyer? Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Now I entertain a motion to establish 2022 pay schedule for full-time employees at current rate with a blank cost of living increase retroactive to January 2/22. We have traditionally, or at least for the last few years, done a 2% cost of living raise. Any of you who are keeping up with Fox Business or whatever, I'm not, but cost of living is projected to be quite a bit higher than that when it's calculated for year 22. I would entertain a suggestion other than 2% from the board. Estimates are somewhere around 5% to 6%.
Really?
Yeah.
Maybe I can get interest on my savings account again.
Well, that's not relevant discussion.
I've tried it, though.
The feds will be increasing their, their front living rate here pronto.
I, I would move to establish 2022 pay schedule for full-time employees at the current rate with a 4% cost of living increase retroactive to January 2nd.
Ms. Moyer?
Was it 5%?
Really?
What is it? What is your source?
It's a human resources website. 5.9%.
I mean, that's a projection.
That's a projection, boy.
Says these things.
The what?
What happened to believing the chairman when he says these things? Let's verify. We're supposed to Google-
I think it's when you said Fox Business was like-
We've said Bloomberg, we've always said. Well, you know, this is, this is a sticky thing. You know, we were talking about the mileage rate and saying, well, shouldn't it have been less, less? Yeah, last year, the rate gasoline prices went down, and now they've come back up again. But you can't predict at the beginning of the year what it's going to cost to drive your car. It just doesn't work that way in this country. Maybe you can predict what the cost this year-
That's true, but we, we are also trying to, to, to raise that level up to be balanced from what was-
No, and I understand that has other reasons.
Leave. And?
Is this our one chat deal, the beginning of the year?
We can change pays anytime.
Well, we don't want to go down.
No.
Just, uh, I just want to know that everybody's, they, um, the, the pay periods for this 2021 ended on January 31st. So, we change, I would suggest we change January 2nd to January 1st. Otherwise, we're skipping one day of no day of. Although it was a weekend, maybe a whole day. Okay, so maybe we should just start with the January 1st, whatever you guys decide.
Okay, I will, you can change my motion, just retroactive to January 1st.
Thank you.
And I stand by the 4%.
Is there a second?
Sounds like-
Sure.
No.
I, if-
Happens every year.
There's a motion and a second? So, um, what was going on in your mind, Marilyn, your-
Oh, I, I just said, I was just thinking, you said you generally go up 2% every year.
For the last several years.
For the last, for the last several years, so.
No, because we can't, if we don't, every last four years, 2%, then how are we staying at 2% this year?
2% go very, but this year, we want to go, this year, we want to go 4% because we anticipate inflation and things like that.
We have experienced, the country has experienced a close to 6% inflation for 2021. So, at the very least, all we're doing is hoping to make catch-up.
Trip one.
Okay. Okay, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Now I entertain a motion to establish holiday schedule for 2022 as follows. January 17th, Martin Luther King Day, February 21st, not the 18th, Presidents' Day. Memorial Day is May 30th, Juneteenth. As a new federal holiday, I think we should adopt to our own holiday schedule. We are not incumbent upon doing that, but I think tradition pretty much is established that, that we follow federal holidays. Maybe not so much local holidays, but at least federal ones. So, I'm going, I'm going to add that at June 19th. Independence Day is July 4th, Labor Day, September 5th, Columbus Day, or Indigenous Peoples' Day. Depending upon whether you want to go with one or the other, or both, October 10th, Veterans' Day, November 11th, Thanksgiving Day, November 24th. We do give employees the option of working Veterans' Day in order to have the day after Thanksgiving Day, the 25th, be taken. So, it's one or the other, not both. Christmas Day, the 26th, because Christmas falls on a Sunday, the 26th is Monday, obviously. The same goes for New Year's Day, January 2nd, 2023. Is there?
I move that we accept these holidays.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Correspondence briefly, OTA Legislative Alert, update from Lee Sloan, our attorney, update from Memory Forest about Bio Earns, RPCC Denver, December 28th, meeting cancellation. Notice from the Ottawa State about the ankle system, January 22, United Care, healthcare policy and procedure protocols. Email requesting prices from Len Forsen, Clifton Cemetery. Margaret, are you going to respond to her again?
I thought you did.
No, I didn't.
Somebody responded.
David?
I mean, I looked at it, and I saw that somebody forwarded my email. Oh, maybe she, was she asking again?
She was, apparently.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but it didn't come to me, so, um, thank you. Bureau of Workman's Compensation Employee Update Webinar Notice, email about Columbarium pricing. It wasn't about pricing, it was about availability. He wanted to just, again, let us know that that Granite is out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, hopefully waiting to arrive at a dock someday and make its way to Belle Fountain, not Belle Fountain. Where's the casket company? Maybe that's where they are. ARPA Reporting for NEU's Email, that's a reminder that we have to report in April, by April 1. Email from Local Government Consultants for 22. This is a, um, this is an offshoot operation that wants to help us find opportunities to help spend our ARPA money. Notice from Kettering Health about vaccine requirements, that's for in-house. Forwarded email from the engineer about the ODOT funding, which I'll make a quick pitch on our road report, which we don't have a road superintendent, he's ill. Happy holidays, happy new year from MBRPC, Green County Public Health Regular Meeting Notice of January, for January 6th. Why senior citizens, their senior newsletter, MTFR December Activity Report, that would be to Bath Township, not just in general. Green County Department of Development Invitation, Ohio Redevelopment Grants Meeting, January 6th, we in Zoom. Hopefully, remember to do that. Fund status, corporations' status, any other correspondence in or out from the board? Don, Marilyn?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, let's move to the fire department report.
Okay. Since the last meeting of the board, we have had 38 EMS incidents, zero in Bath Township, and seven fire incidents, zero in Bath Township. Fire incidents actually included two fires. One just recently was a small cooking fire, which was contained to the stove top on Rice Road, I believe. And the other was on Christmas morning, 1:00 in the morning, a barn, well, storage shed barn type thing, at a Fairfield pipe, whatever it's called there.
Springfield.
Residents mysteriously caught on fire. Crews were on scene within four and a half minutes and had the fire knocked down within a minute after that. Cedarville, Zia Township, and Houston all assisted at that fire.
What is that?
Uh, Christmas morning.
At the Fairfield, the barn?
Yeah. Yeah, it was a small barn. The fire is suspicious in nature and is under investigation. Because things just don't typically catch on fire, in my experience, so.
Was that in town?
Yes.
This, this wasn't Moldy Hang?
Yeah, yeah, this, this wasn't. So, it's about a $7,000 total loss. We returned the case over to the police department for further investigation, so. Okay, got two resolutions for the board this evening. First is Resolution 2022-03, hiring of part-time personnel. I recommend that the board adopt this resolution to hire Thomas DeWitt as part-time, latest addition to our part-time firefighter, paramedic ranks. Thomas is a, currently employed as a full-time firefighter, paramedic with Washington Township. And is, is interested in helping fill in some of the holes we have in our paramedic scheduling. He is highly recommended, and his interview with Swimming Link, so, put him in, he'll be used to fill paramedic coverage holes on Wednesday primarily, and with vacation coverage when one of the other paramedics is on vacation.
I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 22, 2022-03.
I second.
Well, you can move. Remove?
Yeah, sure.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And he will be the first one hired under the increased pay rates. We'll have to look it up and see what it is. What does that really mean, so?
What you're saying is everybody got their pay raises, so he'll be the first new hire.
Actually, no, if, back-
I remember.
Yeah, October, November, when we were talking about the full-time position, the discussion came up about raising the rates for the, the paramedic personnel. And we just haven't hired, my concept was that it would be triggered once we actually hired somebody. So now we have, so that, so he'll get his bump up. Georgia will get one. That's still the one who works for me. Ryan Evans, he'll get bumped up, and then, and then with this guy, then Nate and Jason also, so. Then next up for bids for you guys is Resolution 2022-04, hiring of a full-time employee. Recommend that the board appoint Charles Klein to the full-time position of Fuerishift Lieutenant. He'll be assigned to B Shift, where Alex Webb had worked, left us viciously. Mr. Klein will most likely start in early February. He was the, obviously, the top candidate.
He still has a broken leg.
He broke his leg, but he should be back in fighting condition soon. His recovery's going well. Yeah, thank gosh.
I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 22, 2022-04.
I shall move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There are a motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer?
Next.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes. For purposes of consistency, we may want to change the resolution president title to chair.
I'll have to consult my, my assistant.
I can give you a better topic if you like. All right, uh, next up, we have another, so, last time I advised you, Georgia, Georgia Go to be, got her paramedic certification. Now, Luke Sorenson has also received his paramedic certification from Sinclair, so nice work, Luke. Luke is part-time, works two to three shifts a month, usually billing, and so. He also works for Zia Township and Cedarville Township. We have two volunteer members who will be starting EMT class, actually, maybe tonight. Peyton Cooper is attending Premier Health EMS Academy up in Troy, at Upper Valley Medical Center. And Cole Schlereth will be attending at Clark State. Both have signed their service agreements to give us time after they pass the class. So, that's good. And then, we're looking at some grant opportunities. The federal government has suddenly released, opened up the FEMA grants without much fanfare, because we almost missed them. So, we're looking at doing an approximately $40,000 grant request to, under the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, the AFG, to replace aging turnout gear, firefighter turnout gear. Sergeant Miller Jacobson went through all our gear and did not give me positive news on the status of our gear. Unfortunately, turnout gear is only good for 10 years. And we have much that is beyond 10 years, or closing in on that 10-year mark, so. At approximately $2,600 a set, hopefully, we're back where we need to be.
What's that, what did you say, turnout gear?
Turnout gear. It's the, the protective gear that firefighters wear.
Turnout gear.
Yeah. We're also looking at, this one is a little farther down the road, so we have time to discuss, obviously, because there's a lot more. This one is a safer grant, which is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, also through FEMA, which is designed to supplement staffing. It's basically the fire department version of the cops grant that the Justice Department does. Unlike the cops grant, this one sunsets, so you get three years of funding. The idea is that then some other funding source picks up. Our thought is that, um, this would help bridge until a new levy starts kicking in, additional monies. But we have to research further and figure out costs and come to you, because there is a match. I mean, we'd have to be responsible. I think it's 5% for a community our size, though I need to double-check that, because they change the rules on time. And last but not least, Firehouse Subs has a public safety grant for fire departments. And you have to have your service area within 30 miles of a Firehouse Subs, so we are, okay? So, we're looking at a possible $20,000 grant that would cover replacement of a hydraulic rescue tool set. I.e. the Jaws of Light.
Did we get one of those Firehouse grants, or did we just apply a couple of years ago?
We applied and did not get it, but we were a little bit, after I read the grant, the guidance, and we submitted it, it seemed we were a little bit outside what they were, you know, from the U.S., so. So, the AFG one, we are actively working on right now, just waiting on the, the quote from our dealer, the state contract price has an increase coming, of course, because of the, the guys who make the PVI material, DuPont, they've raised the rates, of course, because apparently, I don't know. My league's going up, so, anyway, so we'll keep you posted on all those, and I'll hopefully have more info on the safer for the next meeting for you guys. And then last but not least, on the backside, just today's state of the station update. Bay Door 4, which is the fourth one down this way, has once again decided it doesn't want to work. So, we're supposed to have repair tomorrow. We'll see. And then, I believe, knock on fake wood, we have the humidity issue tackled in the the bunk room wing with a combination of some adjustments tweaking and a balance of that system. But we're obviously monitoring the situation, too.
Humidity's probably a little easier to tackle in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
There's not so much humidity.
Yeah, we'll see what happens when it gets warmer and see, see if it goes up to 75% again. But I'm still shocked the guys didn't tell us about that until months after the problem was going on. I told you it was wet every morning.
What?
And that is, that is the fire department report.
I see. Anything else with fire chief? I had a couple of things.
I heard you talk to you earlier today.
I know. And we're going to talk again. I'm not sure, was it, Margaret, you brought this up, but there was a question about why the utilities at the Clifton Station seem to be substantially higher one month to the next?
I don't know, the natural gas, because the natural gas is what the last bill I saw.
And then the question came up, are we paying for the senior citizens sign?
No. No, they have a separate meter. I'll send the guys over tomorrow and check thermostats and everything, and I'll check with Mayor Berry and see if they've done anything over there. But we've kept those thermostats about 55.
Make sure that back window is sealed shut.
Yeah, we'll check.
Well, there, we pay a phone number there, it's 7811.
That 7811's our fax.
That's our fax.
Oh, but-
But I don't think that anymore.
Well, it's just-
Wait, we shouldn't be saying that anymore, because-
Well, I'll, I'll check on that.
We can cancel the Clifton phone, I thought we had, but-
I know, we had to.
That's 3211 is the Clifton, the old Clifton phone number.
Okay, well, maybe, okay, I mean, or, okay, but I thought it's-
The fishing is ATT, as they may now cancel it.
I know, we pay water and sewer, but that's, that's-
26 bucks a month.
Yeah, that's pennies.
There is another roof leak, a significant roof leak at Clifton. I've met with the council over there last month, or is it this one? Well, no, this is January. It would have been last month.
Wow.
So, the mayor and I are working on it. I mean, not working physically on the roof, but we're working to address it.
Have you and Cedarville started working on your joint training operations?
We are going to now. We, it was put off with all the COVID stuff, we weren't all the guys together in one place, but, you know, we're going to start working, and the village is tickled pink with that idea. But we got to take care of this roof. And in the world of I told you so, Mr. Meecher, you told us so. The roof contractor we had done, obviously, did not do a good job in the past, so. Do you have any suggestions for a new roof contractor, let me know? And the village is, you know, we talked about pursuing grants that they can get that would help, since they own the building. Help us with that, with repairs, so.
Is this for repair or replacement?
Depending on, I guess, what the contract, what a rented contractor tells us.
Okay. I, I can give you one lead. Just for the general consensus and perhaps the fourth estate, would you just give us your nickel tour of where we are village-wise, COVID-related?
Sure.
What's Paul's interest?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, hopefully, everyone's aware, COVID cases are up significantly in the region and the state. I think significant's probably a small word for it, for what it is. And our hos, more importantly, the hospitals are not overwhelmed, but they're getting to that point. You know, the guys took a patient at the Soane Medical Center, they had 54 patient homes, and they were- You know, the guys took a patient at the Soane Medical Center, they had fifty-four patient homes and they were raising patients who needed to go upstairs, but there was no room in the end for them. And that's the same story at every ER, from Green to Springfield Regional. You probably saw the story of, you know, the National Guard has arrived at Miami Valley to help them with, with over, uh, overflow, basically, to relieve nurses and doctors so they can do their job while these guys do support jobs. Our numbers, I mean, in terms of patients that we're seeing, um, we've probably seen a fifteen to twenty percent increase in patients who are, I'd say COVID positive or COVID possible. There's a lot of people who think they have COVID and turn out not to, but we classify those as, you know, potential, um, with respiratory issues. I mean, if there's, they have a respiratory problem or a fever or something along those lines, uh, the dispatch software classifies it as a possible COVID patient. And many of them do end up with COVID as a primary diagnosis, just when they go to the hospital. We're also seeing a lot of people who are less than seriously ill, who are, interestingly, back in the first surge, if you guys remember, we stopped, I mean, our run numbers dropped stupendously everywhere because nobody wanted to go to the hospital. Now oddly, people want to go to the hospital, including a lot who don't necessarily need, so we're going to work on a public education campaign of, you, you may have seen in other places, like what's appropriate for your doctor, what's appropriate for urgent care, and what's for an ER. Because they really need all the help they can get in the emergency rooms. And it's, you know, the last place we want to do, thing we want to do is take someone who doesn't need to go to an emergency room, sit in an emergency room for four hours with an army of COVID patients coughing and, I mean, obviously they wore masks, but we don't know what you can do, so.
Colin, do you have a sense of the, the, the backup at the hospitals, how much of that is increased patients and how much of it is understaffing because of people not working either because they have COVID or because they decided, you know, not to work?
I mean, it's certainly a combination of both. I mean, there, there, you know, a lot of, especially in nursing staff, there are a lot of nurses who are leaving regular, you know, ER, critical care, or floor nursing to take jobs as travel nurses. They are making, these nurses are making stupendous amounts of money.
Oh, I see.
For travel nursing. Uh, and, and the nice part for a nurse is it's, one, it's stupendous amounts of money, but it's also six weeks here, six weeks there, so you're always moving around. And it's a little nicer than being in the same emergency room or the same critical care unit or whatever, or whatever. But a lot of it is just this increased, mass increase in patients.
Oh, I don't, didn't mean to say that wasn't.
No, no, but I mean, the staffing part is, I think people need to realize that too, that there are, you know, Miami Valley's a massive hospital for our area. It's a giant ER with eighty-plus beds, but unfortunately they don't have as many staff as they have now.
Eighty physicians, one to each bed.
And we just actually received notification from Mercy Health that they are now actively employing paramedics in the emergency room to help relieve some of the burden from the nursing staff, so, which is something they have not done in the past. So it's, you know, it's ugly out there, and it still remains primarily, at this point, a pandemic of the unvaccinated. But, and there's still people too.
There are people.
Yeah.
In that category.
And we have seen some people, you know, who have breakthrough infections, and we've had staff here with, you know, Jason had a breakthrough. But luckily it was very minor, so. But yeah, our guys are still, I mean, they, you know, the one guy is on medical exemption, but yes, we're going to ask anytime he's here. Our guys are wearing masks on every call, and then ninety-five is as appropriate, and anytime they go to nursing.
I mean, currently you don't have any staff testing positive?
No. No, we just tested two the other day, courtesy of friends who helped us out with that, and then we've got test kits on the way for our staff, so.
Okay, thank you. Last thing I had with Colin was, and we briefly talked about this earlier, is I'm trying to think ahead, which I have a tendency not to do, but I'm trying to think ahead. And based on my experience with, um, obtaining a new cabin chassis for a dump truck for the road department, I asked Colin earlier, uh, if he thought we were in a position where we might consider, um, pre-ordering or getting an order in for a new ambulance to replace A one, which is the oldest one. How old, where are we?
Two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five, so, uh, it's, it's definitely been problematic and certainly does not bode well for being a whole lot better in the future. But, uh, what did you say their lead times? They were talking about eighteen?
Eighteen to twenty-four months.
Eighteen to twenty-four months, hasn't it?
When we bought the last new one in twenty sixteen, we were like six months, I think.
So I would, you know, I would suggest, uh, I would go far as making a board motion that, to, uh, allow or encourage or however you want to say it, the, the fire department to begin exploring, uh, what it's going to take to replace, you know, a frontline medic for our department. And how quickly can that be done?
You said frontline medic? You mean ambulance?
Ambulance, medic unit.
Medic unit, okay. That makes sense to me. Uh, I, you know, I would like to see us have a, you know, sort of a rolling inventory of, you know, what are the vehicles we have? When will they, uh, build? Have there been special issues with any of them? When would be estimated, you know, just in an abstract way that they should be replaced? So, um, addressing, Chris, what you said at the very beginning, that I, I rarely look ahead, which may not be the case, but it seems like we should be permanently looking ahead and just have, uh, sort of a capital plan.
I, in, in, in theory, I agree with you one hundred percent. In, in practice, it seems to work out. You know, the, the, the number one need gets met first, as opposed to the number one age or number one malady or, or whatever. For example, uh, our oldest fire engine, uh, we have, obviously we have two fire engines, but our oldest one, uh, eighty-one, is now out of service because, uh, the transmission is not operating correctly and it hasn't really had, had anybody who, who's pinpointed the, the problem enough to get it back in service. So, do we spend three quarters of a million dollars on a, on a backup? Well, what, you know, I mean, we have two and, you know, the amount of fires that we put out are, compared to however, however many EMS runs we have, is just, you know, just incredibly out of balance, but, so where do we spend, where do we spend that disposable income that we don't really have, but we can squeeze it out of somewhere? Yes, we need a, another fire engine, but we probably need to replace this ambulance before, before that. And you can go down the line. I, I mean, the brush trucks fine, we don't, other than the old, no, we can't say that, we're a tanker because we have bad townships.
Yeah.
So. I mean, it's really the.
It's just two big frontline.
Yeah.
Units. I mean, and the problem we were into, like with the turnout gear, with the arbitrary ten-year limit, NFPA set twenty-year lifespans on apparatus. Yeah, ambulances, they're done before twenty. I mean, the exception of this one. Fire engines, you know, they can usually go past twenty. I mean, technology changes. But then you've got a national standard, so if you're running a twenty-year-old plus engine and something happens, comes back on, where did you notice? But, you know, that kind of liability issue, so. But, I mean, the ambulances are certainly the bigger workhorse and are a little on the more fearful side, which ain't saying much because a new ambulance is probably two hundred and eighty thousand at this point, which is insane.
Yeah.
But compared to three quarters of a million dollars for a fire engine, even a, a no frills fire engine.
Exactly.
Or maybe a wheelchair.
You know, from listening over the years, you know, I get a different perspective, is that there are, there are, equipment needs to be replaced because it's truly worn out, or it's, you know, it's, it's needing repairs too often, but there's often just upgrades that need to be made. And whether, we don't even have a choice in that. I mean, morally sometimes, sometimes just legally we have to do it. And that's another component that you, it's hard to plan for.
Right.
And, you know, you'd say, oh, we just need a new ambulance and we can put all the components that are in the old ambulance in the new one and it won't be so expensive, and then you find out, well, no, it's time to upgrade this and this and this and, and on and on.
And I, I mean, I think we've been, we've tried to be good, I mean, particularly, not to puff anyone out, but, you know, with, since Chris has been on the board, we've tried to put money aside for future apparatus, but the staffing costs have taken more of the budget. That money has really disappeared and it kind of shoots you, you know, a plan ain't that good if it doesn't have any money to, to go with it. And we can say, well, this needs to be replaced this year, and then you lay off four guys or you get an ambulance, so.
Just to be clear.
Self-driving ambulance.
If, if this medic was available in, tomorrow, we would take the funds in the general fund that we have from the proceeds of the fire department, this, the old fire department sale, uh, we have, uh, somewhere in the half a million dollar range, getting in there. So we, we could easily pull an ambulance out of there if, if we absolutely needed to. Now, if it turns out that the, the lead time on this thing is twenty-four months, we'll be into the next levy by then. And so we may not, we may go into that, and if we have extra money, we might be able to put it towards, you know, one lease payment or, uh, two lease payments on a new fire truck. You know, who knows in the future what, you know, what that would bring. But we are not spending money that we don't have, so I want to make sure the board understands.
And, I mean, you know.
It's not fire department money, unfortunately, but it is money that's available to spend.
And, you know, anytime you slap the word fire in front of anything, we're emergency medical, it skyrocketed the cost.
Sure.
The ambulance costs have gotten insane, but, you know, we can't build our own, so, I guess we could, but.
Colin, are there wealthy enough fire departments that they turn over their equipment before it's worn out?
Is there a used equipment market that's reasonable?
There is, but most places nowadays with just national budgets are turning it over right at the, the threshold.
There, there.
So we know go to small volunteer fire departments, but there are certainly departments that are, Westerville just bought a ladder truck that was one point seven million dollars, so.
I was just wondering whether there was any way to get a, a newer fire truck as opposed to a brand-new fire truck?
Yeah, there is a market, but not as, there used to be a much bigger market because when times were better, not that they're terrible now, but I mean, trucks were being turned over at ten-year mark or something. But now places are holding on to their trucks to the full max, or you get like a New York City fire engine after eight years, but it's.
It's been used.
It's got a lot of, it's got a lot of use to it.
So I'm, I was not opposing what you're suggesting. I'm just saying, let's do it in the context of sort of an abstract view of, or listing of our equipment, how old it is, and, and, and partly I'm, I'm speaking because I'm not, and I can't rattle off all this, I can't list it. I don't have that institutional memory.
Yeah, I can certainly provide it. That's, that's easy.
And that, that knowledge should start to get out beyond just the, the trustees or just the fire department, set the stage for, you know, going to the community and saying, this is what it's costing us and, uh, do we, do you want it or not? And, and I don't, I'm not saying that we go to the community on a specific piece of equipment, but to, to broaden the knowledge about our capital investments.
But I think that'll also help guide discussions on future levy, coupled with staffing costs or that kind of stuff, on what we actually will need, so. But anyway. Did you guys vote on that motion?
We didn't really make a motion.
Wasn't it great?
Well, I, I did move.
What did you move?
I moved that we authorize the fire department and chief to explore the possibility, what, what the options are for purchasing a new medic and how much it would cost and how much time, lead time there would be.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that motion?
Just to repeat, but as you do it, create a broader context.
Well, there.
We'll call that the Mark Crockett five-year plan.
Maybe the, the context is, what are the costs of employing, you know, paralleling this.
That's the big context.
That's the jumping act we're hearing.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Meacher?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, let us move to the cemetery report.
If you'll excuse me, I've got to go get on a Zoom call with the state fireworks.
Sure, you say hi for us.
I will.
Obviously Dan is ill this evening and not with us. The only thing on the cemetery that I'm just going to throw out here and, and we'll talk about it more as we go along, is, as you recall, uh, we made application to the, um, uh, to the, to the state for their one-time ODOT, uh, grant money possibilities, so we could resurface some of the roads, or the roads, I should say, in Glen Forest Cemetery. And the conventional wisdom appears to be that with thirteen hundred, uh, applications out there, it might be a difficult road to hoe to, to, to be awarded this. And I just wanted to put out that if, in fact, we are not awarded this grant, which I'd certainly look forward to us being awarded it, that we might consider taking, uh, maybe half the amount that the grant would have been, somewhere around sixty thousand dollars, and going ahead and resurfacing the, the three worst areas in the cemetery, the three that are nothing but, uh, gravel and grass. They barely even resemble a lane, and to have those resurfaced and, and tied in with the other, uh, paved portions of the cemetery.
Did you say, but taking half the grant amount?
Approximately half the grant, that's what I roughed down.
And it was sixty thousand, so you're saying take thirty thousand?
No, it was like a hundred and twenty-five, I think, and so maybe around sixty.
And take it from where?
Take it from the cemetery. We have eighty-five thousand in the cemetery account. So we're going to end up, we have.
Yeah, just, I just want to, you know, make sure.
Yeah. We're, we're going to have to spend seventeen for, for the second columbarium, the final columbarium price or cost. And, and after that, that money is available.
Could that be included in the county engineer's, uh, sort of group contract rate?
It, it could, it could be, I guess, depending upon the timing. Yeah, we'd have to ask, we have to ask Dan, you know, how, how flexible that is. A lot of times, if, if we say, we'd like to have, uh, Lamont drive, uh, ground down and, and then, and then paved, um, fine. And we had to commit that in February. Generally, we have to do this relatively early. Well, when July comes around, a lot of times you can add a road, you know, or to, to the work. But I'm getting a little ahead of myself, so I'm not, I'm not really sure on the answer to that.
So this is.
And I don't know when the grant decisions are made either.
So this is something that we will continue to discuss with Dan?
Yep.
Any thoughts?
I think that I have to drag through the cemetery to go to the drills, but sure.
Okay.
But what, what were you asking for now?
No, nothing. It was just a point of interest. Just something I'm thinking about.
We're talking about the western, what is that, the old roads, not the new ones?
Yes, right. Okay, then we're at roads, um, I think we'll let the roads speak for themselves. If they have anything to say, they can come and talk.
They're tired.
Yeah, they are tired.
It's a joke.
Four tires. Now fiscal ups are reported. Now, now we're talking. Now we're getting into the meat of this deal.
For, for Maryland's sake, every year we, um, we set the temporary preparations for, I should have, everybody got a copy of that? Yeah, it's the long piece of paper. Um, and, um, just to get us. And just to get us started, so that we, you can't, I can't spend a penny until I, we have it appropriated and aligned and, you know, so approved by the trustees and. So, and the appropriations that are, that we start out with temporarily are basically the first, they would technically cover the first quarter of the year until we get.
Until we.
Get more money.
Get more money.
And, and, and it's based on what we have cash on hand right now. They can't appropriate above and beyond where our cash supply is. I mean, we'll get more money in all these, in all these funds. It'll come, but it's not always there right away.
So you can't appropriate the whole year until you.
No, and, and basically what we'll do then, three, whenever we, you know, I'm happy to, especially since we have a newcomer here to get together and, you know, we can iron out some of these, some of these appropriations and, and then, so, but, but I, my, the cutoff date is March fifteenth is when we as a body have to have our permanent appropriations set and adopted.
That's for the whole.
For the rest of the year. Yeah, but then again, as you maybe recall, in a couple meetings you went to, I was always amending our permanent appropriations, adding a little more money here because we run, you know, because. You try and, you try and make a, try, you know, based on last year's expenditures and stuff, how much you're going to need, but stuff happens. So anyway, that's what this first, that's what this first resolution is. Would you like me to read it?
Please.
Okay. It's Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash zero-one. It is resolved by the Board of Trustees in Miami Township, Crete County, Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of said sums, Board of Trustees, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty, dang, gone, twenty-three. The dead gone part's not in there. The attached sums being in the same or hereby set aside temporarily appropriated for several purposes for which expenditures are to be made for and during said fiscal year. Now therefore the Miami Township Trustees approve these temporary appropriations during the fiscal officer to submit these sums, submit these sums to the county office.
It is December thirty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, I know. Oh, oh, I did. I'm a little tired today.
Is there a motion?
It was, it was right all along, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was. Is there a motion for approval of Resolution twenty-two oh-one? Is there a motion for approval of Resolution twenty-two oh-one?
I shall move.
Is there a second? A motion and a second? Any further discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meacher?
Yes.
Okay, and then also as a matter of first of your business, we establish a pay schedule for the trustees and myself. That's Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero-two. Whereas it is the intent of the township to authorize the annual pay schedule of the Board of Trustees and the fiscal officer and whereas a maximum annual salary is determined by the state of Ohio's revised code, now therefore the annual salary of the trustees and the fiscal officers not to exceed the maximum amount, sorry, maximum allowable amount set by the state and is payable on a monthly basis commencing January one, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion for approval of Resolution twenty-two oh-two?
It's just saying that, oh, I actually grabbed my stuff. It's just saying that we're going to.
You're not going to be overpaid.
We're going to be paid, but we're not going to be overpaid.
You want to take less you can.
That's true.
Sure. I mean, I moved that you adopt.
Okay, great. There's a motion and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion regarding adoption of this resolution? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meacher?
Yes.
Okay then, and here we go. Now, Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash zero-five. The way the system's set up, if I make one little boo-boo of a number here and there, I cannot, I'm playing it. So once, once you click save on that screen, you can't go back and amend it. You have to go by, I have to go by a resolution. So, and this is something we need to talk about. We can talk about it now or whenever, but accidental, well, let me just read it. Amendment to temporary appropriations. Now we just adopted our, our temporary appropriations and now I had to amend a couple of them. Whereas it is an ongoing process to accurately appropriate funds according to the township. Now therefore the trustees authorize amendment of the following temporary appropriations. In the gas tax, I need to increase trustee's salaries by a hundred and fifty-five dollars ninety-eight cents. In the fire fund, I basically neglected to even put a number in this line of, of paying the boards and commissioners, which is paying the volunteers and who's that by thirteen thousand, that's how much that will need for the first quarter. The Miami Township Trustees authorize the fiscal officer do so immediately.
Is there a motion for adoption of Resolution twenty-two oh-five?
I shall move.
There's a multiple, there's a multiple motion. Is there a singular second? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding adoption of this resolution? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meacher?
Yes.
Okay, I want to say, I need clarification. I know that somewhere along the way we decided that the, we didn't need the fire fund to put any money to, we didn't need to split our salary between the fire fund and the road and general. So then for some reason when I was, when I was doing these appropriations, I thought I remembered that we also decided somewhere along the way that we weren't going to have, that the general fund was going to cover our salaries one hundred percent. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, good, because that's what I set it up to do. But the reason why I had to add money to twenty twenty-one, because last year, we got, we were still, there was a point where we were still taking money out of the road. Mark's page pay wasn't issued until this year. So there we go, I had no money in that line, so that's why I had to add that. That's what Mark's portion of the gas tax went on. That's why that's there.
See.
I just wanted you to know.
Thank you for your understanding.
I'm having a great time. Right, but I think we're done, right?
Any, any other questions for the fiscal officer this evening?
But again, Maryland especially, you know, I know you're like a nine to five or eight to whatever, but sometime if you want to.
Only for a few moments.
Chat, if you want, well, if you want to have a chat and, and anybody, because our, our numbers are getting a little.
Okay, let's have a chat.
Well, not right now, I mean we need to have the numbers in front of us, you know, when we have time to just, just review. There might be, look at the appropriations and.
Yeah, and I think through and I'm already done.
I'm concerned about the fire levy fund for sure. You know, I don't have any, hardly any money in EMS billing. I couldn't appropriate all the lines that we needed because there's just not enough money there right now. So, anyway. And whenever you guys are interested, anybody individually or as a group, I'm happy to, we can.
Yeah, maybe we should meet individually so they don't have to sit through basic stuff.
That's fine.
And then.
Are you hearing this, Ms. Meacher?
I am, sorry. Corporations one oh-one. Corporations one oh-one.
Yeah.
Got it.
Started, yeah. I just, you know, yeah, let's do it. Hey, I don't want, I don't have anything else. I don't think. But if somebody has a question for me or a comment or some gratitude. I'm just playing at this point, okay?
But you need to come over here so you can play to the camera.